Can I have a roll call?
Mary Seminera.
Aziz Hassan.
Norma Drummond, Tara Franco. All right, Mary is our alternate, but because we are, we had confirmed Barbara's absence ahead of this evening, we are appointing her for this evening and she'll serve in that capacity until Barbara returns, so with that being said, can I ask everyone to stand for the pledge allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Couple things for us to work on. Number one, I do want to say I wish everyone happy holidays, the board members and our staff and all of you who are joining us. The, I know we almost had the issue related to snow today, so just a reiteration for those who might be scheduled for a public hearing for next month. In the event of inclement weather, it is posted on certain websites, but on a town website, but if town hall is closed for the day, or at any point during the day, then that meeting, that night's meeting would be canceled. And anything that was scheduled for that evening is just automatically scheduled for the next meeting. There is no makeup meeting for the zoning board. With that being said, we do have, an issue has come up since our last meeting when we adopted our schedule of meetings for 2013. Two of us have conflicts with our children on, for the May 13th date, so I would like to ask the board's permission to be able to reschedule that meeting date. We, I sent an email out and it looked like Wednesday, May 14th was the next day that worked best for everybody. So I do have a motion to amend the schedule for 2014 to make the May meeting to be held on Wednesday, May 14th.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. All right, our next meeting will be, not December 10th, how about January?
January 14th.
January 14th, thank you. We do have two sets of minutes to approve, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of October 8th as amended?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Are you voting or are you going?
I was not present at those meetings.
Okay, so you're gonna abstain for those?
I'm gonna abstain.
Okay, so Mary will abstain for those, for the October minutes? And for the November 12th minutes, do I have a motion to approve as amended?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Again, I'm going to abstain.
Okay, no problem.
I sent my changes earlier today.
I do.
Okay.
Okay, the first item, or the first item of our agenda is for us to hold public hearings. That's when we ask for public comment for the neighbors, because we recognize that you know these sites better than we do. We do have a couple of public hearings on this evening, and then we have a number of reviews, which are generally the first time that we've seen the developments. Item number, or the appeals. Item number six has been requested to be postponed, so if you are in item number seven or eight, just make sure you're after item number five, that you're here for that. So let's start with our first adjourned public hearing. Appeal 3651 Cigna, Salvatore Cigna, 66 Saddle Ridge Road, Hopewell Junction, requesting a 19-foot sideline variance for an existing 1,100 square foot sport court and a 240 square foot shed pursuant to section 194-95 of the zoning ordinance. This variance is contingent upon the planning board approving a lot line realignment between Dr. Cigna and his next door neighbors. Do I have a motion to reconvene in the public hearing?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good evening.
Good evening, how you doing?
All right.
My name's Don Miller, representing, Barger Miller, representing Dr. Cigna.
Okay.
I guess with the conflict or the miscommunication is Dr. Cigna puts us from last month, I'm here to try to straighten things out as best I can.
Okay.
What has happened here is back in 2005, Dr. Cigna erected recreational area, and I think on the, I read the medicine, it says something like 1,200 square feet, when in reality, it's probably a little closer to 9,000 square feet. It's 121 by 72 is the actual blacktop area.
Okay.
That's in question, but what has happened was, when it was installed, the back left corner of roughly 653 square feet is on the neighbor's property. So what had happened was I talked with Mr. Pettis and Dr. Cigna approached me to try to see if we can do a lot line realignment between the two.
Right.
And in an event to try to not really tweak up the lines too much, I gave a six foot buffer going around the tennis court or recreational area, and I know that the zoning says 25 foot is the requirement. So both neighbors were in agreement, and so that's the reason why we're requesting a 19-foot variance, so that the lot lines don't infringe on either side. And what it is, it's an even swap of land, 1,500 square feet, both neighbors' properties. The request was for their acreage not to change at all.
We recognize that when we saw this several months ago as the first start, Dr. Cigna was told at that point he needed to go to the planning board.
Yes.
Are you, we actually opened the public hearing last month, thinking that you were, there was a submission to the planning board.
There has been, I have been to the planning board.
You've been to the planning board?
Only once for a discussion.
Yeah, once for discussion.
Oh, okay, all right.
Very.
Just a, disagree.
Oh, no, we have pictures.
Okay.
Believe me, we have pictures.
Not sure.
Yep. Okay, so you are aware with the planning board?
Yes, right now, I've sent a letter back, request to be placed back onto the planning board.
So there's an actual application before the planning?
Yes, there is.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. And so the planning board will consider this in?
January.
January, but I'm not, I don't know.
So it's not even scheduled for public hearing or anything yet?
No.
No.
Okay, so we're, when we adjourn this tonight, we can't take, we can't take actions if the planning board agrees to the lot line alignment, or else we'd be agreeing to a variance on property that Dr. Cigna doesn't even own.
I understand.
So that's why the planning board has to in fact act first, or complete their action before we can finish, which means when we adjourn tonight, we're gonna have to adjourn it for a couple of months to let the planning board do their work.
I understand.
Okay.
And I tried to express that to Dr. Cigna as well.
Okay, can you explain, are there lights, are there, are there?
There are.
Nightlights?
There's roughly four large poles, roughly I would say 15 foot plus, lighting this court with a 10-foot chain link fence around it.
Okay, no, I want to talk about the lights.
Okay.
Do we have photometrics for the lighting? I mean, the lights are probably what would be more of a nuisance, particularly for evening use, so that's what I'm trying to understand, is this, is he requesting to use this in the evening, or is it really just a court for use during the day? I know he said he had, you know, boys that, you know, used to use it, I don't even know that the boys.
For the most part, like you said, being built in 2005, when I talked with Dr. Cigna, basically, the boys are pretty much all grown, ones actually moved back home, but as far as I understand, I don't think it's, in fact, on the left-hand side, there is remnants of what used to look like maybe a batting cage, but it's pretty much gone by the wayside from non-use.
But the variance stays with the land, and so Dr. Cigna may at some point sell his home, and having lights there may encourage the next user to use it at night, thinking he's got full reign because they're there.
Sure.
So the question is, are those lights removable, or how insistent is Dr. Cigna that those lights stay?
I'll have to approach him with that, 'cause I, well, up until now, there has never been no discussion as far as whether the illumination was, could be brought down, or either if it was his intent to keep it in place.
I mean, again, part of this is, right now, his court is partially on a neighbor's property.
Yes.
Which in and of itself is an issue, but again, we're dealing with that in a proper fashion. To mitigate any potential issue of this, use of this court in the future, again, maybe not by Dr. Cigna, but by a future user, I think if the neighbors would be entitled to, you know, asking for and then potentially receiving from this board some help with limiting the use of that court to within normal daylight hours. Noise, is there music, is there loud music? I know we heard at one point some comments that filtered into us from a neighbor, but not through the public hearing process unfortunately, related to the noise, music that was blaring and things like that, so I don't know how we limit that unless there's maybe some additional screening put up around the court.
Yeah, well, like you said, it's at the far end of the property with nothing but a low area, back behind it, a lot of really overgrown, it hasn't been cleared in any way going down towards basically Lake Vista, but, and then with nothing but lawn in front of it. So, I mean, and then there's woods, for the most part, it's on three sides. It's, you know, it's just natural vegetation. Granted, to the right-hand side, you would, you would be at the rear of the several lots as it goes around the corner there, but again, there's.
See, even if you look at your picture?
Mm-hmm.
All right, and we have the black and white version of it, I'm seeing the neighbor's yards very clearly.
On the far, on the far side beyond the wet area, or the low area, that's where that stream is that goes out towards Lake, that's, you're looking at something, the property itself is 700 feet from front to rear, and then you're looking at another 500 or 600 feet till you got to the back of those houses, so you're 1,200 feet, quarter mile.
Am I in Dr. Cigna's property, or am I in the neighbor's?
You're in Dr. Cigna's property, looking from the back of his house, looking out.
Okay. So there is some vegetation back there, but it's certainly not.
Because it drops down, the trees are not, being a wet area, I'm sure that you're not gonna get substantial growth. Trees have difficulty growing in extremely wet soil.
Oh, okay, all right, so that, the fact that this is now the need, behind helps, because the aerials definitely shows that there's vegetation as you go down.
Yes, ma'am.
And I guess you can see that on the sides that there is some vegetation there. All right, so I guess I'm less concerned about having any screening put in, knowing that this is his backyard.
Yeah, I know, but where could he put something that gets of any kind of height?
See the pine trees? If you could put pine trees behind it, maybe then it screens it better.
Is this the one that is encroaching on the neighbor, or is this this side?
It's this side.
The side where the shed is.
Yeah, it's this side that's encroaching.
The shed in fact is over the line as well.
Okay.
So you see there are lights, but can you get us photometrics of those lights so that we can understand?
I can see if I can find out some more information about when he's installed.
All right, and what the wattage is, so we can really see, does it spill over? But again, because the neighbors behind are at a lower elevation, all they have to do is look out, and those lights are, they're gonna look into those lights because of just the natural.
Sure.
The other thing is that tennis isn't a problem, but if they're playing basketball at night, that's, that's a substantial noise.
Right. Well, they could use it for roller hockey, they could use it for anything.
Anything.
Any number of sports on here.
Sure.
Probably soccer, that's probably, you know.
Well, it all depends.
Again, the issue, I mean, one of the issues that I am facing is of course, is a 10-foot chain link fence, and I think it has got some screening also on it.
He does have some, some degree of, to diffuse the vision or the view coming from the back edge. It's really like a nylon netting, or really tight, more like filter fabric or something, you might say something like that.
Tennis court. You kinda need a 10-foot fence, that's one of the problems.
Yeah, and then you got.
It is in the backyard.
Yeah, next to the shed, you have a whole series of light, is this the batting cage that you're talking about?
Yes, where the, it looks like the blue.
Well, I have.
Mars is black and white.
Well, I'm sorry, up in the front left-hand corner, there's a small box there, I think that was like the pitching machine.
Aye.
Okay. All right, well, again, we need information on lights, and we're gonna need some weight or some commitment about noise, we're gonna have to be able to be clear about either hours of usage or something that would limit the loud music being played for neighbors.
Sure, I can understand that.
And again, this batting cage you said is kind of falling apart, is there a possibility of having it removed?
It would be, at this point, you can see there's framework, I don't know if you see from your picture, but there's framework on the left-hand side where it might have been to keep the balls from exiting that area, and even that, that netting is no longer there, so I don't know exactly how long was the last time it was actually used, but it would be nothing more than just taking down some of those metal frames.
So is that feasible?
I would, I would say yes, if that's, if that was.
Okay, between that, when you come back, or, you know, can we find out if those?
Yeah, I'll, all these things I'll propose to Dr. Cigna and see what he says.
Okay.
I would have hoped that he would have, I tried to explain to Dr. Cigna, this is your property, to your advantage, even though that Mr. Pettis has agreed to the changes and really has an issue with the lot line changes, is you really need to explain yourself for the most part.
Or reduce the issues, I mean, the less issues that we have to deal with, the easier it is for us to process them.
Yeah.
And there's also a fence, a chain link fence that needs?
On the left-hand side is because of what, because of what the tennis courts was, Dr. Cigna put up a black chain link fence.
Right.
That it, that, well, that small little box is, it looks like the pitching cage.
Okay, but that fence is staying, no, it's not the fence associated with the sports cage.
No.
You looked at the survey?
Yeah, that's my survey.
In front of, in front of it?
Right.
There's a fence, that has, that's gonna get removed or get moved in.
That's gonna be removed, yes, and we, once the line is agreed upon, I will restake the line so he can reposition the fence.
Okay, 'cause that's not, that's not part of the lot line realignment that you're seeking?
No, this is, it's mainly all based upon this recreational area.
Okay, any questions or additional questions or comments from board members? Not seeing none, is there anyone here to speak for or against Dr. Cigna's appeal? 66 Saddle Ridge Road, Hopewell Junction, requesting a 19-foot sideline variance for an existing 1,100 square foot sport court and a 240 square foot shed, understanding that the planning board still has to do its work, so this hearing would be adjourned tonight, and there will be another opportunity for comment. Do I have a motion to adjourn to?
February.
No, it's gotta be March.
March 11th?
March, because if they review it in January, schedule a public hearing in February.
March is fine.
They could, they might not meet before we do, okay?
Correct, correct.
So adjourn to March?
So moved.
So moved. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. We will see you again in March.
Sounds great, thank you.
And please keep up on the planning board application.
Please, ma'am.
Thank you.
Like I said, I've already sent the letter back, request to be put back onto the planning board.
Good, thank you. All right, item number two, appeal 3654 Seeger, Nicholas Seeger, 51 Stone Ridge Lane, Hopewell Junction, requesting a variance from section 281 of the town ordinance for an existing house, which was built in the 1980s with no building permit on record. Motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Seeger, good evening. We did have a discussion last month about your request, and we noted that there were actually two other driveways, or two other appeals on your street that were granted for the same issue. We had a discussion about the fact that you've owned this property since the 70s, the house has been built, and you've been occupying it, but at this point, you're looking to sell, and so we've gotta clean up the property, so anything else you'd like to add to that? No? Okay. Any questions or comments from board members?
I'm good.
Okay. Is there anyone here to speak for or against the appeal from Nicholas Seeger, 51 Stone Ridge Lane, requesting a variance from section 281 of the town ordinance for an existing house? Yes, come on up.
Mr. Hyatt.
We're gonna ask you to come to the microphone, we'll ask Mr. Seeger to sit down, thank you.
William Hyatt, I own a property adjacent to him.
Okay.
And I have no problem with anything he wants to do, everything's okay with me.
Thank you.
All right.
We appreciate you coming out.
Could we please sign?
Yes, could you, we asked you to sign it just so we get your name spelled correctly for the minutes. Anyone else? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
This is appeal number 3654, applicant is Nicholas Seeger, name of the project is, applicant is requesting a variance from section 281 of the town ordinance for an existing house that was built in the 1980s on a non-town road with no building permit on record. Resolution offered by zoning board member Aziz Hassan, whereas the applicant has applied to the zoning board for a variance from section 281 of the town ordinance for an existing house which was built in the 1980s on a non-town road and with no building permit on record, whereas this action is a type 2 action under SECRE and no further action is required, and whereas a legal notice was published in the Southern Duchess News on December 4th, 2013, and whereas the zoning board of appeals held a public hearing held on December 10th, 2013, and whereas the zoning board of appeal finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to the community as other houses on the road have applied to the zoning board for variances to build on the non-town road and the variance has, have been granted. The desired result cannot be achieved by some other means as the house is already existing, the requested variance is not substantial, the proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood as there are other houses on the non-town road and the road is maintained by the homeowners. Now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the request made by Nicholas Seeger of 51 Stone Ridge Lane, Hopewell Junction for a variance from section 281 of the town ordinance for an existing house which was built in the 1980s on a non-town road with no building permit on record. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Okay, good. Is there a second?
Second.
Votes as follows, Aziz?
Aye.
Tara? Aye. Mary?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So do your motion carry. Okay. Thank you. All right, item number three, appeal 3655 Jones, Bruce Jones, 70, Christine Court, Stormville, requesting a special permit to allow an in-home professional office, a mortgage broker pursuant to section 194-90 of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, again, we reviewed this last month, you are a mortgage broker, you do not expect to have clients coming to your home, but because of IRS rules, you need to have a place to hang your license.
Correct.
You do not expect to have employees, maybe occasionally somebody may come to your home, you do not expect to have a sign, so realistically, there is very little impact on any neighbors related to your operation of a business at this address.
Yes.
Anything else you'd like to add to that?
Nope.
Okay, any questions or comments from board members?
I'm good.
Is there anyone here to speak for or against? Mr. Jones, Bruce Jones, 70, Christine Court, Stormville, requesting a special permit to allow an in-home professional office as a mortgage broker in his home. Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mary, Angela?
Sure. This is appeal number 3655, the applicant is Bruce Jones. The project is, the applicant is requesting a special permit to allow an in-home professional office, mortgage broker pursuant to section 194-90 of the zoning ordinance. The location is 70 Christine Court in Stormville. Resolution offered by Mary Seminera. Whereas the applicant has applied to the zoning board for a special permit to allow an in-home professional office, mortgage broker pursuant to section 194-90 of the zoning ordinance, whereas this is a type 2 action under SECRE and no further action is required, and whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Duchess News on December 4th, 2013, and whereas the zoning board of appeals had held a public hearing on December 10th, 2013, and whereas the zoning board of appeals finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to the community. The desired result cannot be achieved by some other means, the requested variance is not substantial, the proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood.
Can we change area variance to special permit?
Sure.
Thank you.
Now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the request made by Bruce Jones, 70, Christine Court, Stormville for a special permit to allow an in-home professional office, mortgage broker pursuant to section 194-90 of the zoning ordinance. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed within, with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Is there a second?
Second.
Votes as follows, Aziz?
Aye.
Tara? Aye. Mary?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Your motion carries, your whole set.
So we'll put special permit twice on page one. Okay, are you going to take the special permit?
Um, okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Item number four, appeal 3656 Castro, Nancy Castro, 210 Lee Town Road, Stormville, requesting a two-foot variance for a proposed six-foot fence to be located in the front of the dwelling, a 30-foot front line variance for proposed six-foot tall driveway pillars, a 16-foot front line variance for an existing 24-foot by 24-foot attached garage, and expansion of a non-conforming use for a proposed second story addition on the attached garage, as well as a proposed 12-foot by 22-foot deck. A 11-foot and 12-foot variance, sideline variance for existing six-foot by, 11-foot and eight-foot by eight-foot sheds, well, pursuant to sections 194-121, 194-98, and 194-123 of the zoning ordinance. I'm not seeing for here.
No, this, the letter went to the town of Kent.
Oh, okay, that's right, okay.
We gave them 30 days.
So, but we're opening the public hearing, recognizing that we're going to adjourn it to?
January.
January.
Aye.
Okay, so do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Again, there's nobody here to take any questions from, is there anyone here to speak for or against the appeal as I just read it? 'Cause that was a lot of numbers to go through. Seeing none, we're, again, we're going to adjourn this public hearing because, because this actually property joins the town of Kent, Putnam County, so we actually had to give them appropriate notice. So with that, the 30 days notice, it wasn't enough time between our last November meeting and tonight, so do I have a motion to adjourn this to the January meeting?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And turn to January. All right, item number five, appeal 3658 Doyle, Mary P. Maney, trustee for Betty Doyle, 28 McEwen Terrace, Hopewell Junction, is requesting an 11-foot front line variance for a pre-existing dwelling, a 24-foot front line variance for a proposed 33-foot by 24-foot garage slash laundry room addition, and a 50-foot rear line variance for an existing 10-foot by 10-foot shed pursuant to sections 194-121 and 194-123 of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we did have a review last month with a friend of the family.
Yes.
Okay, given the circumstances, we did have extensive discussion about whether it could actually be shifted around to potentially reduce the variance, and we, we do want to recognize that this is an accommodation that's being requested because there is still an elderly person still living in the home. And to be able to make accommodations so that she can have easy access to laundry facilities and, you know, the use of garage and things of that sort. So I think we were all set otherwise. Are there any questions or comments from board members?
No, I'm good.
No? All right, seeing none, is there anyone here to speak for or against the request for the trustee for Betty Doyle, twenty-eight McEwen Terrace, Hopewell Junction, requesting an eleven-foot front line variance for a pre-existing dwelling? So again, the house is already there. A twenty-four-foot front line variance for a proposed thirty-three-foot by twenty-four-foot garage slash laundry room addition, and a fifty-foot rear line variance for an existing ten-foot by ten-foot shed. I thought we had some discussion about whether that shed was gonna come down or not.
No, the discussion was that there was no building permit. The shed's been there since the house was built.
Okay.
And it's an eight-by-ten shed.
There was discussion about that if it was a problem that they, it was, the gentleman who was here representing it might come down, but it wasn't...
He said he might remove the shed that had been there forty years.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But you're, the intention at this point is to not remove it.
Is not to take it down unless it was...
Okay, well, it was, it was noticed, so, you know, I think we were, we were okay with it if it was, if it was that important.
Okay.
Okay, is there anyone here to speak? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Applicant number, I'm sorry, appeal number three-six-five-eight, applicant is Betty H. Doyle. Applicant is requesting eleven-foot front line variance for a pre-existing dwelling, a twenty-four-foot front line variance for proposed thirty-three by twenty-four-foot garage slash laundry room addition, and a fifty-foot rear line variance for an existing ten-by-ten shed pursuant to sections one-ninety-four-dish-one-twenty-one and one-ninety-four-dish-one-twenty-three of the zoning ordinance. Twenty-eight McEwen Terrace in Hopewell Junction, tax map six-three-five-six dash oh-four dash five-one-five-three-eight-zero, zoning district R one. Resolution offered by zoning board member Tara Franco. Whereas the applicant has applied to the zoning board for an eleven-foot front line variance for a pre-existing dwelling, a twenty-four-foot front line variance for proposed thirty-three by twenty-four-foot garage slash laundry room addition, and a fifty-foot rear variance for an existing ten-by-ten shed pursuant to section one-ninety-four-dish-one-twenty-one and one-ninety-four-dish-one-twenty-three of the zoning ordinance. Whereas the application is a type-two action under Secra, and no further action is required. And whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Duchess News on December fourth, two thousand and thirteen. And whereas the zoning board of appeals held a public hearing on December tenth, two thousand and thirteen. Whereas the zoning board of appeals finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to the community, the desired result cannot be achieved by some other means as the proposed garage is in line with the existing driveway. The requested variance is not substantial. The proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood. Now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the request made by Barbara P. Maney, trustee for Betty H. Doyle, twenty-eight McEwen Terrace, Hopewell Junction, who is requesting an eleven-foot front line variance for a pre-existing dwelling, a twenty-foot for, a twenty-four-foot front line variance for proposed thirty-three by twenty-four-foot garage slash laundry room in addition, and a fifty-foot rear line variance for an existing ten-by-ten shed pursuant to section one-ninety-four-dish-one-twenty-one and one-ninety-four-dish-one-twenty-three of the zoning ordinance. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant slash owner.
Is there a second?
Second.
Quotes as follows, Aziz?
Aye.
Tara?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Your motion carries.
Thank you very much.
All right, our public hearings for the evening are now complete. As I mentioned before at the start of the meeting, item number six has been requested to be postponed to the January meeting by the applicant. So we are on item number seven, appeal three-six-five-nine. I don't want to pronounce this wrong, but Damelo? D'Amilo?
D'Amello.
D'Amello, okay, thank you. Robert D'Amello, sixty, Rodeo Drive, Hopewell Junction, is requesting an eleven-foot sideline variance for an existing two-hundred-and-eighty square-foot pool cabana pursuant to section one-ninety-four-dish-one-oh-seven of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
So we have your application before us. Again, this is the first time we're seeing it, so we're just gonna go through if we have any questions. My understanding is that your pool was actually put in a floodplain, and you are, you have requested or filed for a floodplain development permit?
Yes.
But you have not yet received it because the building department is waiting for our action.
Yes.
So again, that's more information for this board. The cabana is also in the floodplain, but the development, floodplain development permit would cover both. You have a fence that's on your neighbor's property?
Yes.
Has that been moved yet?
I don't believe it has, and I'm not Robert D'Amello either.
Oh.
I'm, I'm his contractor, Jason Kashingano.
Got it, okay.
Sorry, your name is?
Jason Kashingano.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have, yes, we do. Okay, good. I'm just making sure we have appropriate documentation that you are here to represent them. Okay, thank you. So, so you're not sure that that fence has been moved?
No, I know it has not been moved yet.
You know that the owner is aware that that fence must be moved?
Yes.
Okay. And there's also a shed?
Yes, there's a shed on the line, it's not over the line.
All right, and that shed's gonna get moved as well?
Does it need to be? Was that part of...
It's not...
It's not a ten-by-ten shed.
That's not part of the application.
Right.
But it is on, I think it looks like...
It's on the line, it's not over the line.
Doesn't matter.
It's not over ten-by-ten, so it does need to be moved.
Does need to get moved.
It's one of those vinyl sheds, I know that.
It's ten-by-ten?
No, 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 it's not ten-by-ten. It's one of those small vinyl ones you pop together.
Oh, like a, the metal frame kind of thing?
No metal frame, it's vinyl, it snaps together like the kids' playhouses almost.
Oh.
But can be moved then?
It can be moved.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, and there's a, like a bin for pool toys or something like that?
Sitting right next to it.
Okay.
It's probably like, maybe three foot.
That's actually on the, on the property, on the, on the neighbor's property.
Right on the fence, right on the fence line, but not over the property.
All right. But again, that, can that get moved?
Yes.
Okay, because again, your, your neighbor, the applicant's neighbor is entitled to...
Correct.
Separation.
Yes.
More things are closer to his property, that screaming kids, going to the toys, and, you know...
Correct.
If it can get moved away, for better. It was not part of the request to happen here.
And I, I think, if I'm not mistaken, I think that that box has gone. That was an older box if they don't use it.
Oh, okay. All right, even better, that, that's fine. So what we're talking about is an existing pool cabana was built. Do we know when it was built?
It was built the same, the next summer from the, the pool. So it was two thousand, what year was the pool built?
Does the pool have a CO?
No, that's how it was built.
That's how you discovered this, okay, all right. Okay. Two hundred and eighty square feet.
Two thousand and thirty, no.
No, eight maybe?
Two thousand.
Nine, somewhere around there.
The thing is, two thousand and eight, the pool was built, two thousand and nine, the cabana was built.
Something like that. Well, the cabana never had a building permit either.
Right.
What are the dimensions of this cabana that it...
Eighteen by twenty? Sixteen by eighteen.
Okay.
Or sixteen by eighteen.
I mean, is there running water in it? What is the, it's just a changing area and storage area?
It's, it's just a screened-in structure.
Okay.
And it has a barbecue there.
Oh, okay.
But there's no running water.
Got it.
You know, he has, he has some outlets down there.
Okay, but that's fine, that's...
It's actually sitting on a slab, and it does have four columns in the corner.
Okay. So it's not something that can get moved because of the concrete foundation? Okay.
Right.
All right, any other questions from board members?
Did you happen to have any photos?
He did not send me with any.
Could you, for next...
We can get some photos, absolutely.
Just in case a neighbor wants to see what it looks like. It makes it easier for them and for us to understand exactly what you're asking for.
What is off to the side, it looks like, of the cabana? I see the bins, I see the shed, and is there something else there?
Um...
Is that, is that like a, like maybe a pool here, or some kind of piping or something, or...
Okay. Yes.
There's a fire pit on the other side, but...
Yes, if you're looking, if you're looking directly behind the cabana...
Yeah.
Here's the shed, that, that one little toy box?
Yeah, the bin, I can see that.
That's actually not a toy box, that's for the chemicals for the pool.
Oh, okay.
Okay, that's what that is, now that I remember.
So that's the pool platform.
And then, and then to the right, if you're looking towards the back of the lot, to the right of the cabana, those would be the pumps.
Okay.
Okay.
The little squares there?
Yeah, that's what, yeah.
Yes, those would be the pumps.
Okay.
All right.
And here, okay.
Then he also has a stone structure there, like a waterfall. So that's...
It's part of the...
Part of the pool.
Pool, okay.
Any questions from board members?
Yeah, I mean, again, do you have a better map? Because it's very difficult to...
Let's survey it.
Yeah, survey map, can we get a better map?
A better map than the...
You know what, Pam, can, for next time, can you take, just take the portion of this and blow...
And blow it up?
Well, yeah, not quite blow it up, but you know what I'm saying, enlarge it?
Yes.
Yeah, because it's very difficult, because all of these little things are there.
I don't like blowing up people's property if we can help it, you know?
Yeah.
It is, it's, it's like extremely difficult to read it, so I agree. If Pam can enlarge just that portion of it, at least it'll make it easier for us to see really what's on here.
And again, whatever the, you know, again, photographs of the areas, as my colleague had mentioned, would help for the next visit, and then also as far as the property line alignment, or, I mean, not alignment, but...
The fence.
Yeah, I mean, basically, the fence, because looking at the bin, it seems to be on the neighbor's property from the survey.
Okay.
It's very clear to me, looking at the survey, that it is on the neighbor's side along with the fence. And the corner of the shed is also on the neighbor's property.
Okay.
So there are three issues up here, the fence, the bin, and the shed. And if it can be moved, great, I mean...
Yeah, if it can be removed, get rid of it.
Yeah, definitely the shed and the storage bin can be moved. And I'm...
The fence.
The fence is gonna be moved back, that one post I think was out from what the survey's showing.
I mean, it looks like it's surrounded by vegetation, so I'm not...
Yes, yes, they, the, I know Rob and his neighbor themselves have planted a tree line.
Yeah, there's a whole line of trees clearly that was planted along there, so that, that, you know, in a couple of years, that should grow in nicely for that.
Mm-hmm.
All right?
I'm good.
Have a motion to allow us for public hearing? Yep.
So moved.
Second, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We'll see you next one, or see somebody next one.
Okay. He'll get notice of that?
No, this is your notice, and you actually need to see Pam, she'll give you the instructions, because he's gotta put a sign out on the front of his property to alert, advise his neighbors.
Excellent.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And last but not least, appeal three-six-six-zero Caswell, Mike, uh, sorry, William Caswell, forty-two Long Hill Road, Hopewell Junction, requesting a nineteen-foot sideline variance for a proposed twenty-five-foot by thirty-foot attached garage pursuant to section one-ninety-four-dish-one-oh-seven of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Good evening, how are you?
Good, how was your trip in here today?
It was nice, smooth. The snow's gone.
Smooth but not icy, I would say.
That's right, that's right.
So, all right, so again, first time we're seeing your request. If you could just take us through, you're looking to build a garage. Twenty-five by thirty feet is a little bit bigger than we would normally see, so if you could explain the size.
I was just looking to have it two cars wide and two cars deep. I have a twenty-three-foot camper, I like to park in it during the winter months.
Okay.
I have a standard IBM or raised ranch house with the garages under it. They're very short, I couldn't, I can't fit any type of pickup truck or SUV in it. So I like it to also be able to put my cars in there during the winter months,